Okay, it's five o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting order.
Aberly?
Yes.
Mice?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Wohl?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, before you have the agenda, uh, I don't know if Nicole, you have an addition?
Yeah, I just want to talk about the advance to add to your order of how it's gonna go. Daughter mom, I'm in a business or?
I'm finishing. Anybody have anything else? If not, we'll move on to the budget planning hearing. Or prior to have a meeting by, based on the tax levies at Minot. And I don't know, do we have anybody in the audience that wants to address, uh, school tax levy? Can't hear me?
Not at all, sir.
Is there anybody in the audience that wants to address the school tax levy? Any comments from the board?
No comments.
I'm good.
No comments.
Alright, we'll move on to, uh, Mr. Gertie.
Okay, um, first of all, I'd like to thank the, all the custodial staff or all the cleaning they're doing and all the teaching. All of our teachers are teaching, distance learning, your name, so thank you. And what I brought you today is I wanna say, um, our kitchen staff is doing an amazing job. They are working extremely hard in the kitchen, making, um, new menus. Uh, the kids are absolutely loving it. Um, the more I'm in there, the more I find out what we don't have in the kitchen. Um, so, what I'd like to ask you to look at, take a look at, is our kitchen would like to have a s- braising pan. And we have the kitchen staff here, they would like to come up and talk a little bit about this braising pan. Because they're the experts, and come on up.
And great job, ladies, thank you.
Alright, my name is Michelle, and I am the head coach, apparently. And this is Christie, Dee Dee, and Krista. And we all work our butts off in that kitchen, I know that. Um, I've been talking to Mr. Gertie, and we have about a tilting skillet, and I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with it. But we're probably the only school in the state that don't have one. I mean, I've talked to a lot of people, a lot of kitchens that have them. They're amazing. Um, a lot of the things that we're cooking on the menu this week are this month. Um, we don't have the equipment to make it, period. We, we improvise every day, we...
We create over three days in a row, period?
Three days it took me to make spaghetti sauce.
We have a hard limit of resources, it's fried hamburger one day, a sauce one day, put it all together one day.
We don't even have a frying pan in the kitchen. That's why burger got boiled. I have improvised, we have, I use, I don't even know what it is. It's a big cake pan looking thing. And that's what we use, and, uh, they did buy us some, what are they called? Roasters.
Roasters. We have our own, I guess.
I heard this spaghetti was amazing, by the way.
It was.
It literally took us three days to make it. In, with what we have, a tilting skillet, we have it done in the morning. And long as it, I mean, it can brown to, I think that hundred and sixty pounds of hamburger. Now, when we do hamburger, it's eighty pounds for one meal. So, with the stuff that we have, we can't, I have to brown it like two and three days ahead of time to get it done.
And many batches?
Many batches.
Many.
All day it takes me to brown a hundred and sixty pounds, two days actually to brown hamburger, and it's, it's ridiculous.
Oh, okay.
Um, straining it is a whole nother thing, I mean, we've all got burned. It's, the, the, the stuff in the kitchen is so old, I don't even know how, I do know how it got done before, because it wasn't good. It was frozen, you know, french fries and chicken nuggets or whatever, no. I don't, I see these kids what my kids would eat, what my grandkids would eat. And it's hard, it's not easy when it gets a lot of work.
It's an example of grilling, uh, the, uh, frying the ground beef. In the tilting skillet, you can fry the entire batch of ones that you would need, instead of many batches. It tilts, it drays your grease, pour it into your pans. And then, 'cause it's not a great there, let it back down, and then you got all of your ground beef done in a compact.
And you can do, you can do many items besides hamburger, you can do...
You can steam, you can deep fry, you can make soups, possums, mashed potatoes, gravy, beans.
About half of the month of October, we can make in that tilting skillet, everything that we're gonna make, which is... And like I said, I don't, I wouldn't have to start two days early to burn a hamburger, I could start it in the morning, as long as it's thawed, of course.
So not only would this be a time saver, but it sounds like maybe even a money saver in the end, I'm sure guys. It will free you guys up more to do other things.
We can already expand our menu because of our limited oven space. Right now, we're basically can't have chicken patties and french fries because our oven space is so limited. Whereas we can do some, maybe, just an example, we can do some of the things in the tilting skillet and use the oven. So, it would allow us to expand our menu.
Um, we don't even, when I, when I started baking in the kitchen, we didn't even have, um, flour, sugar. We had nothing like that, and never had, according to the ones that had worked in there for a few years. So nothing got baked, nothing got, but we don't even have a cake pan or a browning pan to make brownies or bars or whatever it is that, that anybody wants us to make. Um, there's so many things in that kitchen that it's just, we didn't even have, uh, measuring spoons. So I have Googled more in these last, in the last month than I have in my entire life to try and figure out how many cups of this I need, and sixteen cups of flour for this, and whatever. But we don't have any of that, so...
Yeah, do you wanna explain the quotes that you are assuming you got these for us?
Mr. Gertie has them, I don't have one.
Yep, um, well, we have Minot Restaurant Supply, okay? That is a Falcon, and the bid there is nineteen thousand, three thirty-four. The second page is Capital City. Now, if we're gonna, um, compare apples and apples to oranges, oranges, um, the bottom price for Capital City with the same as Minot Restaurant Supply is forty thousand, six hundred twenty-three. And then for just a third bid, we went on the internet, we went to Culinary Depot, and, um, it's twenty-two thousand, two thirty-four. And so, um, those are three bids for you. The one from Minot Restaurant Supply, they are giving us a pretty good deal. We have a two-year warranty, which is always good, just when you're dealing with expensive, um, equipment.
So, I am saying that I think you guys are doing an amazing job, and it makes such a difference. Like, it makes a difference in how well the kids perform in school, it makes difference in their attitudes. It just, it having people not be hungry is a big deal. And I think that kids before were really lunch hungry, because they didn't like the food, and they like it now. My kids are, like, are enjoying the food, and I think that's, they're not alone in that. So I really, really appreciate it, and I don't think that you can expect that you guys keep frying hamburger over three days. So, I mean, that's, that's not reasonable expectations.
I also feel that we, we are feeding a lot of students now, compared to last year, in previous years, we're, we're feeding a lot of students. And hopefully, you know, they're continuing to eat, and the food is great, like you said.
And I think, just to piggyback off what Nicole is saying, is that, um, I know a big concern in the past, and when I say in the past, I don't mean this school year, but in the past, um, you know, we've really tried to kinda coordinate good, filling, card meals on days where kids have to travel for a football game or a basketball game. And I know that can be quite challenging if you don't have the tools to get that done. Um, but, so, I think that not only, um, is this a reasonable request, but I think it will also benefit you ladies in the kitchen who are having to maybe look at sports and create the menu and see what's going on that day, and maybe what kind of food we need to feed them. 'Cause maybe it is a Friday, and we wanna give what we play to spaghetti. Um, and, you know, if, if you're looking at, you know, the menu a few days in advance, in advance, and realize that you have a big football game on Friday, but it's, you know, you can't make it if you don't have the tools. So, I just wanted to add that.
So I did talk to Mr. Gertie just about the cost, and he asked my opinion, 'cause obviously, I wa- I really want this for you guys, and it's all about, and if you can't write the check, you can't write the check. So he has a problem with how we can figure it, I guess, right?
Yep, I, I, I'm positive that we'll be able to cover this cost. Through, um, the, the new EdCor money, that we can transfer some money. Not to buy the, um, equipment, but to move some money around. I know the kitchen's, um, just a hot lunch, or we're bringing in some money that will help us pay for this. So I'm positive that we'll be able to make this work.
And we'll do that, I mean, it's a responsibility.
Yes, correct.
Doing that, our general fund?
Correct.
Great.
I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but the ovens, I happen to be going through some paperwork. And I literally found the paperwork in the file cabinet from nineteen sixty-nine, I think. Uh, it was kinda comical. But, the ovens that are in there are forty years old, they were put in there in nineteen eighty. Um, it doesn't cook evenly, the ends get burnt, we did order a new part burner, I think, too. That came in today, but it was a wrong one, so now we're out in the leak or whatever, so... It burns on the end, and it's not done in the middle, so we're rotating the pans, but that too in itself. I don't have time, we don't have time to be rotating thirty pans in a ten-pan oven.
Well, the red section takes five, ten minutes, and you have to put it in for a few, rotate everyone.
Everything we do is, it really is, and I mean, it doesn't have to be as hard as it is or go as it has to. We could make good meals if we had the things that we needed to make them.
So do you think that, or I think, I don't know, more things, I think that it would be a great idea for me to make a priority list?
We, prior to this, at, um, the end of last year's school year, we did have a priority list of things needed in there, and we thought we were gonna be able to do some of that stuff, but it kinda fell by the wayside. And I would think, I agree with Nicole, beyond this, if you can make a priority list of what's needed, we'll certainly take a look at ways that we can try to...
Oh, I have the list right here. It's all on, it's all written here.
Yeah, you know what, I did show a couple of board members, but just the quality of the pan that we have in there is so light. They need commercial break pans and pots, and so, and that's just a visual for you. But, um, I did, I have been talking to the kitchen staff of having a list of what they need and prioritize them. Because we do want them to get the equipment they need, and it's been such a long time since we updated anything, and it's, you know, and business minded that I am, we should be improving that kitchen every year, something every year, just to make it, you know, last as long as we can. So, no, um, we've been talking, what are their priority, priorities and what they need.
So, you got that list ready, and you can send it out to us?
Well, yes, I can.
Oh, sorry, you'll get that list and send it out to us?
Yes, I can. Yep.
That's about all I have, it's just, uh, you know, with what we have in there, we can't make what the kids for, the staff who wants to commit, it's not possible. It's possible.
Well, you're doing an amazing job so far, but...
But I have to get it three in the morning to get it done, and so, it's like, oh, it's hopeless.
Well, I wanna thank you for what you guys are doing, and, uh, keep bringing the list forward, and we'll keep looking at it.
Okay.
It's pretty much very frustrating to do a job with not the correct tools.
Yes, it sure is.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the purchase of the tilting skillet braising pan from Minot Restaurant Supply.
I will second that.
I'll third it.
Yes.
Mice?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Wohl?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Um, I'm gonna interrupt you one second, I skipped something, I gotta move back in a few minutes. Oh, man, I have September 14th.
Um, the only change, I guess, I can see on there is, in the last paragraph, under your business personnel, um, just put manager afterward, business, the first one. Do you see that, Tyler? Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes with the word manager added.
I'll second that. Aberly?
Yes.
Mice?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Tyler Erwol?
Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Gertie, sorry, the last thing I have is superintendent evaluations, need to be done by November fifteenth, if I will be sending that, or emailing it out to you.
She did send it.
Okay, okay, that needs to be done by November fifteenth.
So if you could get him to be on the first November, that would be good.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Hello?
Um, well, I have a few questions about the bills, or on the financial report, does anyone have anything?
No.
I did not.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve that, oh, Bill, sorry.
I'll second that.
Aberly?
Yes.
Mice?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Wohl?
Yes.
Um, I do have a couple of open enrollment tuition agreements. So, just a question in general, um, for any kind of open enrollment or tuition agreement, if they're on an IDP, we would have to pay for extra for that service at another district of that track?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have student number seventy-six, naturally, we have to consider seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight altogether, 'cause they're family union.
So, I don't see any reasons besides the fact that they've gone to their next school, but, um, I don't find anything to confirm it, I guess.
I don't see that.
Yeah, it, it just says they moved into Surrey, and they continue on that, or something. And it's open enrollment, so it's like, we don't really have a option.
Can you say we don't really have the option? Oh, because they moved. Oh, you mean, sorry, is it open enrollment versus tuition agreement? Oh, gotcha. Well, we really haven't, you know, come across open enrollment, so I thought that policy, I guess I'm deferment to policy that we were using for tuition agreements, which said unless they have a parent teaching at that school, or, or working at that school, or some other...
Well, and typically, open enrollment's gotta be approved back in March, that, that's when the deadline is. This is a move, so indeed, that's probably a fine situation, so...
I'll make a motion to deny seventy-six, seventy-seven, and seventy-eight open.
Typically, we, we can't really deny open enrollment applications.
You can.
Why do we bring them before the board?
Right.
What's that?
Then why are they brought before the board if, if we don't have a option to, because they currently live in our city, in our district?
I mean, it, it has to come forth, because they're in our district. I guess I'm not aware of, or how, how you can disapprove of it. My understanding is on a move, you cannot deny open enrollment, because it was a move. And they, the reason why they have to be paid for it is because they go to that school, and then they're in that school for the duration of their life.
Okay, I think, I, that's why I thought I could announce about the policy. And I, and I think I was told, and maybe it's just a misrepresentation between us, that I, I was told that it didn't matter to deny that open enrollment, so I think that's probably why I...
Tuition waiver. Tuition waiver, we can...
No, I was just refreshing that open enrollment at the last one. So, I guess if there's nothing we can do with this, and there's nothing we can do with it, I'm not making a motion to approve it.
We will, or you're not?
I'm not.
Well, we, we either have to approve or disapprove, so Dustin, are you sticking with the motion waiver?
Yes.
And, I'll second that, assuming that we're allowed to disapprove it.
Oh, Julie Johnson, has, uh, did she send you, uh, sent you a call about that? We can vote together, and table it too, if we table it, then we should do, maybe we'll...
I'll make a motion to table it till next meeting, so we can find out further what actions we are allowed to table.
I second that, I second that.
Well, actually, if we can table it, just table it. Table it till next meeting. Uh, number seventy-nine is a tuition waiver out.
The mom worked for it.
Is that on?
Yes.
Oh, and it's really small print.
It's really small, I know, I'll buy that one, too. Well, again, this is just based on our prior, you know, scruples, not approvals, we can approve them if their parents have worked at Minot's school, so I'll make a motion to approve seventy-nine out.
I'll second that.
Aberly?
Yes.
Mice?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Wohl?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Ms. Hanson?
Um, everybody's talking a little bit about our Facebook page. We, we had it up, we took it down, we had it up, we took it down. We've got a couple of drill rookies working on Facebook here that neither one of us are Facebook fans, so... We have it up, but today, now, we're looking at it, and the way it's set up, it attaches to like our Facebook page, so we have to go back to the original way. So, it's gonna be a little bit changed, um, we're trying to find a way to set it up so people can comment. But if you go that way, then it's gotta go through my Facebook page, and I'm just not real fan of having my Facebook. Not that there's anything too exciting on there with the grandkids, but, um, so we're gonna reset it back the other way. And then I'll, we'll just put something on there about, you know, not taking comments on it. And I can't always go in and delete them if they're anything bad, but, um, but we did put a few things on the first day, and have people sign up for, join, whatever they do on Facebook, so, so it, it is coming, so...
Yeah, you can, uh, set it up so posts have to get approved through you.
And that's the other thing, I, nobody's gonna post except either Sean or I.
Okay.
I'm talking comments.
And you can turn comments off when you post?
When, only on...
Only on groups, but if you do it on groups, then when you post yourself, it shows up as, like Ms. Hanson and Sean Gorki. When you do it as a page, and you're an admin on that page, and you post, then it shows up as Suri School posting this, and it doesn't link back to their personal Facebook.
Oh.
Facebook has it set up specifically to drive traffic and to drive multiple clicks through multiple people. That's why they do it exactly that way. One way you'll comment, one way you post personally, which means your link is there, it's done specifically. So, we'll go back to doing a page, just kinda like how RVs and all these other country, companies do it. Then when they post it, it says it's from Suri School. And the other concern I had is new people, or even people who've lived here for many years, when Ms. Hanson posts something, they're like, who's she? Because it doesn't say Ms. Hanson, principal, or it's not coming from the school, it actually says on her account, Debbie Hanson. So, it's better the other way, and people will be able to comment, so we'll get it worked out, it's gonna be fine, we're, it'll be fine.
I guess I just always defer to the website, Suri School, so...
Okay, we'll move on to audits, audit suggestions.
I just wanted to, um, let the board know that I did get all of the employment agreements, which is what they're called, from Delta School. And I did tighten them up and curtail them to fit our school and our employee needs. Um, I do need to do one more for one other employee, but everybody else that I have, um, Mr. Gertie wants some time to look over them. So I have the one that I tightened, and then I have the example that I used, but they are done, so that's one, you know, step.
Alright, thank you, Tyler.
Is it?
Yes.
Nicole, advanced ed?
Yeah, I'm just kinda wondering, I, who's noticed my kids are taking tests, and so, what the plan is to, you know, I know we have to put together something for advanced ed to make, to try and make your scores improve, and somebody's curious what the plan is.
Okay, um, I've actually been emailing back and forth with, um, Pam Stroklund from mine, and she's our reviewer, or whatever you would call it, for the advanced ed. Kinda took a look at it earlier, and to be honest, since school started, have not had time to do it. So, visiting with her, we're gonna kinda try and get it, um, lined up and get together before Christmas. So when we leave for Christmas, we've got a good idea where we're heading, and then January or February, we'll work on it, our review is in May, May first, so... So hopefully by then, by the end of February, it'll be ready to go, so...
What, what are, what's your plan, and how are we gonna try and prove the score? Because I think you were concerned that, that, um, you know, maybe our scores were skewed because of other factors. So, you know, what's your plan to try and make this a better representation of, of our student body?
Well, that's what we're gonna be working on. They gave us a list of questions that we're supposed to go through and answer, and kinda get to where we're working for, so, so it's all in the process, um...
Okay, so the test that students are taking right now, those are part of that, you know, uh, our report part, per se, right? Or not, or when do the kids take these tests?
I guess I'm not following what...
The, you know, the results that show how we compare to other schools, those, the test...
Those like state testing?
Yeah.
Oh, that, yeah, that's not until later on in the year, so, we would use from last year's scores, which kinda got...
Oh, so you use last year's scores?
And notebook.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which way, it doesn't have to be appropriate.
So, so far this year, we've taken like the, um, what do you call it, accelerated reading, start reading in math, and taken those. But that's not comparing to, I mean, it gives you a percentile on things where the kids are at, but it's not like the state testing.
Right.
And that's the same situation, but, well, I say, these are some of the things we'll work through when we get together and look at those questions, um...
So you'll have like a better plan, and that, so for a state test, if you think that you're doing, you're, you're confident you'll have something in place to try and make those scores better, or you're just working on the, on the plan right now, is that right?
Well, I said, we haven't gotten much of a start on it, but yeah, that'll be in there.
Yep, yep.
So going back to the open enrollment, it looks like according to number seven, everything is waived, even the paperwork. So the paperwork doesn't even have to come to the board for open enrollment. You waive the application consideration and approval dates. And then they have to just go to school there until they graduate. Or go through the process.
Right, in the past, we've always had it signed, so they have a paper trail that they, their student...
But it just looks like it doesn't need to come to the board for approval denial, it's just a, hey, there's an open enrollment for knowledge base.
But it, you know, I...
But number seven's the exception, because they moved in the middle of, or after the closeout date, so that's where the exception comes in with number seven.
I think, okay, yeah, we, the application consideration and approval dates. I think, I don't know, I think you're right, does someone, then, I don't know, maybe that's just referring to application dates, consideration dates, approval dates.
Yeah.
That's what I'm wondering, if it's all referring to the dates and not necessarily approval of the, or denial of the form.
I would agree with what Nicole stated, I mean, it, it's basically sending away the dates, but I, I still think we need to add the form side. Yeah.
Um, but then, isn't the main, and I don't have time to read this, I still think we should just table this, because that would give me eight points, I'd like time to read it, in the entirety.
Well, if you go down to open enrollment grounds for denial, there's nothing listed there.
Yeah, but two says, or is it two? But yeah, the board of the admitting district shall approve or deny the application.
Some edros would have to approve it.
I'm, I'm just looking for a number eight reason for denial, it doesn't give it...
It doesn't have any listed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You, you're right.
Nedros has one, but, and they're admitting, right?
So then it's just more of a knowledge base, hey, we had a student in our district who's open enrollment, going to Nedros.
And if you guys want more time, we can just leave a table, it's all that's needed.
I would like to just table, I just like, like to read it.
Okay, we, we do have a committee to look at this, so it's, it's not for sure.
Thanks, Dan, I would have to...
Oh, yes.
Have you guys had time to open it, see it?
Yes, I actually have an email about it, so I'll send what I have to you guys.
Okay. Our next board meeting is November eleventh.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.